I think everyone knows everyone, but no, actually, people don't know everyone. So I'm gonna just look at the screen here and tell you who's here. And they can tell you more about themselves than if they want. The upper left-hand corner on my screen is Janice Khan. She's the chairman of the Public Safety Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee. Then Elizabeth Childs, she's a psychiatrist or something. And she used to be the director of, she used to be the Massachusetts Commissioner of Public Health. Jane Binney, June, I'm sorry.
Mental health, Bernard.
Pardon me?
Mental health. I wouldn't want the public health challenge right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mental health, okay. That just goes to show, don't rely on my memory. So June Binney, who's also a psychologist of some sort?
No, a lawyer, lawyer.
Lawyer, okay, again.
Sorry.
There's Ron Wilkinson, who is, I'm not sure what you do, although you're very active in.
I call myself an information technologist, so I do IT stuff for Boston Children's Hospital.
And very active in equity issues around his church and elsewhere. Paul Yee, a former judge, and I'm not sure what else. Okay. Raj Danda, who's a local businessman here in Brookline. There's Michael Zurab, who's a PhD student at Harvard and is involved in research in policing. There's, is that Michael Downey, who's assistant town council, who handles our labor negotiations. Daniel O'Leary, who's a former chief of police here in Brookline. And is going to, well, Mel Kleckner will introduce him further later on. It's, let's see, Jonathan Mandi, who's a local businessperson and, you know, involved with other things. There's Marty Rosenthal. I can't introduce him in just the 30 seconds that I have. So I'll just let him tell you as we go along, his background, which I'm sure he will. And there is Casey Hatchett. And who's, okay, who else is here from the police department? I see someone who looks like he's in the, in part of the police station. In the lower left-hand corner?
That's Michael Keveney, Bernard.
Sorry, Michael. I really apologize. I didn't recognize you in the way you come up on my screen. Hi, Michael. Michael Keveney is the president of the Brookline Policeman's Union. And then Casey Hatchett, who's sergeant in the Brookline Police and does a lot of things related to the scope of our committee. And Mel Kleckner, the town administrator, and of course Devin Williams, who's our staff support person. So anyone have anything else to say about their introductions? About themselves? Okay. So we received from Feng Yang, who's not on, I don't believe. I'm sorry, not Feng Yang, from Devin, minutes, proposed minutes for.
Bernard, may I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
I just checked with Dwayne. He says he's having trouble getting in. He thinks he's hearing everything, but I told him to look for his video button. Sorry.
And audio button.
All right, well, let's see what happens next.
Yeah, okay. So Devin prepared minutes, and I'd like to vote approval. But I'd like to hear from people if there are any edits to the minutes.
Did you, did people seem, I'm notorious for adding to minutes. Did people see my additions, proposed additions?
I have not.
Yeah. What were you proposing for the minutes?
I sent them out, what time? Noonish, 12:29 AM? Anyway, maybe nobody got them.
Okay, make sure that Devin has them. And why don't you tell us what they are in general and.
Okay, actually, some of them were questions, but I'll try to go through them quickly. On the number one discussion, oh, first of all, I think you had Raj absent.
Yeah. He was here.
Yeah, so I added him both in the attendance and also on the open meeting law briefing, or whatever that's called.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then on discussion number one, it said 9:30 AM. I think it's 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay. And then I recall some question about the length of the meeting. So I added that there was discussion about whether it should be an hour and a half or two hours. But we don't have to add that. We can figure that out later.
Okay, that's a valid edit.
And then under 2B, smaller work groups, you see that?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I thought that really goes under number four, but put that aside. I was confused about some of that description.
Yeah.
It said.
Let me propose a change to that. Smaller work groups formed to discuss the issue of police complaints. And surveying Brookline Housing Authority residents includes, and then Michael Zurab, Casey Hatchett, Jonathan Mandi, and Marty Rosenthal.
Complaints, yes.
Two separate groups.
Yeah, that's part of the confusion.
I are working on complaints. And then Casey, Jonathan, and I are working on the Housing Authority Residence Survey.
Okay. Devin, do you have that?
Yeah, and folks can, well, first of all, everyone should have accepted that we are recording this meeting. So I'm going to be able to play it back and watch that when I'm editing. But also, you can feel free to shoot me an email with the edits as well.
Okay. By the way, did you record the last meeting?
I did not. We hadn't discussed.
Right.
If the group was comfortable with that.
I said that, said that we didn't discuss or record last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure I was correct. Okay, you got those changes?
Yeah, I had two more, I think.
Okay.
And Marty, I did get your email, so I have all those.
All right. Just talk briefly what they are, so we can approve the minutes as amended.
All right, well, the next one had to do with community outreach. And I added that there were questions like duplicative public hearings for speakers and experts that we have to sort out that issue.
All right.
And then on the, paragraph B there, I added patch. I don't remember if TAB included patch, which is the second. It's an online publication now, strictly online by the former TAB reporter.
Okay.
And then I do believe that we talked about splitting the proposed topics into proposed subcommittees under 4A, which I think is something I hope we're going to do today, some more of.
Okay, so we didn't talk about subcommittees, so that shouldn't be in there.
Okay.
Okay, so does everyone agree with those changes, so we can approve the minutes as amended? Okay, I'm over approval, pardon me? I'm over approval of the minutes as amended. All in favor, just raise your hand. Okay, okay.
I think I should abstain, Bernard.
Okay, why? Oh, you weren't here.
I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay. So Elizabeth Childs abstains. Any opposition? Okay, minutes are approved. Let's move on. We have Mel Kleckner here, and I'd like him to say a few words before we get started. Mel?
Sure. Thank you, Bernard, and welcome, everybody, to the meeting. And again, thank you for your service to the town, a very important matter facing Brookline and our country. I wanted to report and update the group that we've made changes to the leadership of the police department in response to the sudden resignation of the chief a few weeks ago. And at their meeting last evening, the select board voted to approve my recommendation to appoint an acting chief of police. But in terms of the outreach and the public engagement over this issue on police reform and police reimagining, we have decided, or I've decided to recommend, and the select board approved last evening, the contract, a contract employment situation with our former chief of police, retired chief of police Daniel O'Leary. And Mr. O'Leary will serve in a civilian consulting role on an ongoing basis over the next year or so to try to help and identify appropriate reforms and ways to reimagine our policing. You know, my feeling is we cannot do this without involvement of our police at the highest level. And Mr. O'Leary has been, during his career, a champion of 21st century policing. And I believe will be a great asset to both the committee, the task force, and myself and the select board as we go forward. I mentioned last night that in some discussion of why I had brought back Mr. O'Leary as opposed to just assigning an existing member of the police department's command staff. And that's because I feel strongly that we have a unique opportunity and a window of opportunity in this town and this country to make some big differences. And I think Daniel O'Leary has the experience and the commitment to that. So I want to welcome Dan. He is observing the meeting today, really just getting started. And we really need to develop a work plan for him. But I know he's got a lot of ideas and would like to approach the committee on some of those ideas and how to work them. I would also mention that one of my charges to Mr. O'Leary is to bring the involvement of our ranking officers in our department, both lieutenants and deputy superintendents, and be directly involved in the work of this reform effort. And I do that for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think they have a lot to offer. And secondly, I think it's really important for these ranking officers, who are the future of our department, to really start to get involved in the type of public engagement and the processes that are so important and will, you know, round out their experience and career if they want to pursue further leadership in the police department. So that's basically it. Happy to answer any questions about the scope of that work or how it interfaces with the work of the committee. But I know that Dan is interested, not at this meeting, but at a future meeting, to share his ideas and get some more input of the committee. Thank you.
Let's have a brief moment where people have any questions?
I have one comment. Do you want to comment?
Sure. And by the way, Dwayne is here, so he wasn't able to get on.
You act surprised. I don't think you're surprised that I have occasional comments. But anyway, I really welcome Chief O'Leary. I have said this in the past, that as far as I know, and I have experience all over the state with lawyers all over the state, that he was as good a police chief as there was in the state of Massachusetts. So I don't say that just to flatter him, but I'm putting my bias on the record right now before we hear anything from him. So I'm happy that he's here.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, let's move on. Discussion of, first, our educational program, what I'm calling town hall, educational town halls. So there was some discussion last time of whether we could have a sufficient discussion of all the issues in policing within a one and a half hour period. And I'd like to talk about that and whether, you know, there's some other format that we could use. Anne Braga has suggested that we pre-record topics and make them available to people prior to our listening session, which is scheduled now for September 30th. You know, that's one option. Anyone have any other ideas or suggestions with respect to the educational component of this, which in my opinion is incredibly important? You can't start out on a process of seeking policing reforms without knowing something about policing, and particularly Brookline Police Department. And its history, and where it is now, and, you know, where it sees its future. So, so any other thoughts?
Bernard, could I suggest that we move to a format or consider having an educational component to each of our meetings, where maybe the first 15 minutes is dedicated to hearing from a representative from the department in areas that we've identified in the first meeting as being critical for review of this committee? You know, a representative for the civilian complaint process, our crisis intervention team, training and accreditation, our community service programs. And that will give, I think, more opportunity for this membership to learn about the programs that we have, the work that we do, and to better inform our decisions in making changes or recommendations to how those are implemented in the department.
All right. With that being lieu of the educational town hall, or education too.
So is the educational town hall only for this body, or would that be open to the public?
Oh, no, that's for the public.
Right, so I don't think this body, at this point, would be, have enough information on the police department programs to be able to talk at length on many of those programs.
The idea was to bring in experts who can give a briefing on, you know, the issues that we need to understand in order to go forward.
So I think it would be in addition to that, and then a way to educate this group as we proceed with our work over, you know, the next many weeks. And then also would give, I think, an idea of what topics would be covered at the public meeting at the end of September.
Yeah. Okay, I guess I'm hearing that, you know, we would have the town hall. And then as we begin our regular meeting schedule, which would be after September 30, we would begin each meeting with 15 minutes of, you know, information.
I mean, I would even suggest we start next week, since we've already kind of dived in on some of our subgroups. You know, and I think in our subgroup, I think Jonathan and Michael and I have had some, you know, really formative discussions about programs that are within Brookline Housing Authority and some issues that I think really help us kind of direct the work that we're doing. And I think that would be important for this group on many of the topics that we're going to be kind of delving into, you know, immediately.
How would next week's 15 minutes go? What are you proposing there?
I think we could start perhaps with our crisis intervention program, since I know there's been a lot of discussion around law enforcement response to mental health crises. We could invite Lieutenant Pastor to come and speak to that program and the work of our department's social worker. June, I know you have been heavily involved in that as well, and could certainly lend to that discussion. I think it may be, you know, a good place to start, just as a suggestion.
Bernard, if I may, I like Casey's idea because even as I was looking over what we're going to be talking about today, I feel like we're all at, in different points of understanding about. Like, I know that Lieutenant Paul Campbell hears complaints. That's all I know. I don't know anything else about the complaint process. I don't know about the complaints about the complaint process. I don't know the numbers. I don't know any of that. So I think just giving, you know, just leveling the playing field for the first couple of minutes of each meeting, it would be a good idea. So we know what we're even talking about.
So it seems to me that what makes sense is to, you know, have that first, that 15-minute segment. Next time, be focused on the things that we have people working on. For example, Brookline Housing Authority, you know, what it is police do there? That's related to the survey that has been put together. Or, you know, the complaint process, what is the current complaints process? So, you know, so it's related to what we're actually doing in the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, may I, I'm sorry to be a monkey wrench here, but I guess I'm not yet convinced this is the right approach. And one of the favorite words ever used for me was iconoclast. So if I'm the only one thinking this, so be it. But it seems to me that, take the two that have just been mentioned, crisis intervention and complaints. Each of those working groups, subcommittees, whatever you want to call them, obviously has to work on those issues and talk to the current department officials that can educate them about those issues. It seems to me to be premature for those department officials to be coming in and talking to the whole committee until those subcommittees have done their own educational work and come up with some recommendations, maybe split recommendations with, you know, two-to-one votes and stuff. And then at that point, the committee probably does need to hear from the actual experts. But I just don't see the point of having the committee hear from insiders and outsider experts on every topic before the subcommittees do it. It seems to me the subcommittee should do the initial work and present reports to the committee. And then the committee might very well want to hear from the people that gave the information to the subcommittees. But it just seems to put the cart before the horse. We had about 20 topics on that list. I think one of the first things we should be doing is breaking them into groups and forming a subcommittee for each one. So I guess I'm not yet convinced that that's the best use of our time or the people that you want to invite in for presentations.
Okay, is there any disagreement on having an initial educational town hall? I mean, just give people, not just this committee, but the entire community, some background information on what policing is, what the Brookline Police Department does, why they do it? You know, just general information, so that, you know, we start off, you know, with a basic knowledge that we can work from.
Right, so Param, I guess my thought is that that hearing being at the end of September, it's the end of August, we're in our second meeting. And so I don't know that four meetings from now is just when we want to begin getting educated on some of the things that I think are really critical to consider in our subgroups. And I do think that it's a responsibility of all of us here to understand policing and the Brookline Police on a larger level and not, you know, just subcommittees, because, you know, I have, I have a lot of thoughts.
I'm not saying that subcommittees do this. The town hall, let's keep focusing on the town hall idea and whether that's a good idea. But the town hall would be to give people a general understanding of some of the issues and some of the facts that they need in order to make decisions and come to conclusions.
May I jump in with a question that relates to that, which is, how do you see that in conjunction with an open public hearing for people to, from the community, to come in and talk about what they would like to see happen? It seems to me that that's more of the first step for me, and they could be combined. It could be, for instance, a two-hour session or a three-hour session with half of it being what you're talking about, but the other half being what I'm talking about. It just seems to me that we certainly have to do what I'm talking about as well. And I don't think we can put that off for a few months. I think it's important that we get all the people that you've heard from, Bernard, and I've watched you hear from, to come in and talk to us.
Okay, that's the idea. They would, we'd give people the opportunity on the 30th, an hour and a half, or maybe it should be longer, to, you know, make their complaints, give their ideas, you know, comment on what the committee's been doing so far. But, you know, the foundation for that type of a hearing would be, you know, a broad educational program that says, you know, here's, you know, what police do? Why do they do that? You know, what are the non-traditional jobs that they do? So that we can, you know, then, you know, they can then give comments as to whether they think that, you know, let's say animal warden is proper for the police department versus responding to mental health crises and things like that.
If I may jump in, I completely agree that the public forum, you know, should take a lengthy amount of time in order for the public to be able to say what they want to say. But prior to getting there, you know, as an educational component, prior to getting there, the public need to know what we're doing here as well. You know, and I believe in conjunction to the educational piece in, you know, helping them understand what the police do in town, it's imperative for them to also know what we're doing here and hoping to accomplish. So, you know, what is police reform? Why are we doing this work, you know, in, you know, in our town and in the importance of it? So I think both of them need to be presented in a way that allows the public to make up their own mind in understanding the work that we're undertaking here.
Right, right. No, I think that's a good point. But, you know, it would be, I see that, I think what you're saying is that the educational town hall would include a segment discussing this committee and why, you know, why it's being, why it's being formed, why it was formed.
Precisely, you know, in our findings, I mean, we have subcommittees and we have different findings. You know, I can only speak for my subcommittee, but so far, we've done, you know, a lot of work in coming up with survey and interview questions and so on. So in that, it's going to take time to come, you know, to develop, you know, numbers and responses and to be able to quantify it. But even before then, you know, we can come to a sort of, a sort of an understanding of, you know, here's what our committee is so far finding in a research that we're doing, and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's down the line. I guess, you know, I'm still fixated, maybe, on the proposed educational town hall on September 16, where we sort of introduce ourselves as well as introduce the topic. You know, what is policing? You know, what is it that we're looking at?
So Bernard, can I speak for a moment?
Yes.
So I heard Marty talk about, about what we have as a subcommittee done, or discussed rather. And to me, the idea that we're going to educate ourselves what police does, of course, we may not know all the small details, but don't we know what the police does? I mean, I find that, I find that this group, the idea that we are now going to have a substantial amount of time spent listening to police department describe what they do, which they should be doing in any case, we should not need a committee.
No, 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 wait, Raj.
Please let me finish, please, please.
You're going off on the wrong track. Go finish.
May I finish? Yeah. So I think that is, in my opinion, outside the realm of this committee to reform the police, policing in Brookline. The subcommittee meeting we had, I thought was on the, on that point. And Marty's comments, I totally endorse. But, but really, I'm a little lost in that we should now be educating ourselves.
No, not, Raj, stop. No, stop. We're not talking about educating ourselves. We're talking about educating the public. Now, later on, we'll have educational programs, you know, for the committee as proposed by, I guess, Casey. But the. But the town hall I'm talking about, and maybe we don't want to do that, but it is to educate the public, give the public an understanding of the issues that we're, that we're working with. So it's not the committee that we're talking about.
All right, I've said what I wanted to say, and let's move on.
Okay.
So I'm in favor of these 15-minute informational background presentations. I've started to, at Marty's suggestion, go through the police department manual. It's very long, it's very detailed. I like to have somebody speak to me and bring it to life. What exactly does the police officer do out in the field? I see what it says in black and white, but what happens on the field? I think that will bring it to life and give us some information that we probably won't get from just reading the police manual. So I would be in favor of 15 minutes. It could be 15 minutes or 10 minutes or whatever, you know, time we wish to allocate to that. And we could decide on the topics that we would like presentations on. And this is purely for background information. It wouldn't be subverting what Marty's saying about the subcommittee and what they would be doing. But this is for background information so that I don't have a good understanding of the police department in Brookline. I've lived here for a long time, so I like to be informed.
Okay, Michael Zurov, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know.
By the way, when people have something to say, please raise their hand. My ability to coordinate discussions with the chatroom is limited.
Yeah, thanks Bernard. I think it would be a good idea to have a subcommittee focused on this town hall session. I think many people, including myself, when we applied to this committee, were not, like, I'll attend this town hall session, I'm interested to hear what people say. But I'm, there's a lot of work on our charge, and I've already got a lot of work that I'm doing. And I think there's just a lot of work we have to do. And I think it sounds like those people who are especially interested in organizing this town hall education session should form a subcommittee and do that, and not take this time where we're all together to focus on that. Because it sounds like a few people, especially you Bernard, are particularly interested in this, and I think it's important. But I just think it would be a good use of time if that was done during a subcommittee, and then you could update us on what you've done at these meetings.
Okay, so, I mean, actually, the question is whether the committee agrees with this idea. I mean, if we don't agree with it, we don't need to go forward.
Well, yeah, I mean, the public, excuse me, sorry to cut you off, June. I think the public, as of now, you know, this is our second time meeting, and people don't, I mean, there's a handful of people that know that there's, there are two different groups. For one, reimagining, you know, the other, the police reform. But, you know, people need to know what is going on, there needs to be transparency, not only in what we're working on, but also in what the police do. So both of them go hand in hand, so that people can fully understand the work that we're undertaking here. So I think, you know, people, you know, I would have, I would have had to patch publicly something yesterday on what we're doing here.
Okay, Ron?
Okay, so one of the things I'm still wondering about is how are we coordinating with the reimagining task force? Because is one of the public hearings, I understand at the end of September is a joint public hearing with the other committee and with us, first of all, is that true?
Yes.
Yeah, and then are we talking about having an additional meeting that just we put on, that's in the middle of September? I'm a little confused about what's happening on the 16th, 17th, and 30th.
Both of those things were the proposal, you know, we can change that. But the idea was to start off by giving people a good educational background on policing in the Brookline Police Department, just so they have that basic fundamental knowledge to be able to make, have opinions, to make decisions, et cetera. And then on September 30th, the plan was to have a joint hearing, listening session, with the reimagining committee, so that we could gather, you know, public input and incorporate that into our deliberations.
So the 16th is more a presentation rather than a feedback kind of a thing? It's just sort of presenting sort of things. So, and they're intended to, it's intended to be, I'll say, sort of like, sort of facts just about, you know, the use of the functions of the police department, use of the tasks the police department does. And they could even be in the form of, sort of like, videos just kind of about the police department as opposed to a feedback kind of a thing. Is that like, one of, one possible format for what we put out in the 16th? Especially if we do it as videos, people can watch, don't have to be there at that time, they can watch it at any time. We can just kind of publicize them around the 16th or whenever we've got them ready.
Right, yeah, that was Ann Braga's suggestion, and I think that's a good suggestion. And, you know, the idea was, at least my idea, I mean, a few other people agree with this, but not necessarily the whole committee, and you can tell me whether you agree. But the idea was to have, on the one hand, the sort of police view of what policing does, and, you know, the types of non-traditional stuff that they get involved with. And then maybe someone to give a critique of that, critique of policing as it's evolved, you know, critique of the type of non-traditional things that police do, et cetera. So you get, you know, not a one-sided educational, but something that'll really give people a good foundation upon which to, you know, develop, you know, questions, opinions, et cetera.
Okay, so what we want to do, yeah, for example, I'll just kind of throw out some ideas. Like, say we have four 15-minute videos, and two of them are functions of the police, and two of them are sort of critiques of those functions, so that people can watch them. Or is two 15 minutes each too long, and they should be 10 minutes apiece? And are just two sort of main topics reasonable? Or should it be something like, you know, like five or 10 minutes, but several topics? So that people can kind of, and people, and they would be separate videos so that people can kind of watch the ones that interest them the most? And I'm just asking, you know, just coming up with ideas about different ways we could possibly format that, those things.
Oh, I think, I think that that's a good idea. I mean, and it makes sense, it's actually more practical than maybe, you know, the general idea that was initially presented. Before, okay, Marty, go ahead.
Well, I liked Michael's idea, I've been pushing subcommittees already, and I think this one needs more of a focused discussion. For instance, you know, Paul made reference to the 600-whatever-page manual. I mean, if you just ask someone from the department, whether it's Chief O'Leary or the acting chief right now to come in, and what are they supposed to talk about? I mean, we have a bunch of things on our agenda, I'm not even sure that's a comprehensive list. Are they supposed to talk about all of them? Every single page in that manual?
Well, yeah.
I guess I'm not clear exactly what you're trying to educate about. We have a lot of specific issues we need to talk about, at a minimum.
Okay, yeah.
We need to narrow it to that.
Let's not let the large amount of issues we have to talk about prevent us from doing, you know, some things to get moving here. Chief O'Leary?
Yeah, if I could, I would just like to go back a little bit to what Casey was talking about. And the fact that, I think it's really important that we get enough, or the committee gets enough information on what the Brookline Police Department actually does. We just don't want to lose sight of the fact that you're taking a look at reforming the Brookline Police Department, and you have to have a baseline understanding of what it is they do in handling different situations. I think Casey's suggestion was actually legitimate, and I think it was very good. And I think it would allow everybody an opportunity to hear from people that are actually doing the work. And you can limit that amount of time that they put a presentation on, and then you can ask questions of them. And you can't do that when you're talking about the town hall and the videos and all that. So this is a time that you have for them. Maybe it would require extending the meeting a little bit. But I think it would be worthwhile to see what the police actually do, the training that they've had, the incidents that they deal with, and how they're different from a lot of other departments. And I think that we owe it to them to look at it that way.
Again, that's not in lieu of the educational town hall or whatever.
No, no, it would be a part of the start of these meetings.
Let me just ask the committee whether they want to even go forward with the idea of an educational town hall. Is there agreement? And then if there is, maybe we can set up a subcommittee to figure out the details.
Yeah, I would like to think of them more as educational vignettes, video educational vignettes that we publish, and I would be happy to be in a subcommittee to look into that further.
Okay, okay, but what does the committee think? I mean, do we want to even do this?
Sure, I just don't personally want to be on the committee charting out the details. But I think it's good work, and I would be excited for the department, or for people on this committee to put it together.
Okay, great, is anyone object to it?
I don't object to it, but I would like to keep it from becoming a PhD thesis. By that, I mean, let's just keep it limited, limit the amount of time and what it is, and then move on with the work of the committee, which is to discuss the reforming of the police.
Right, okay.
Bernard, yeah, make a suggestion.
By the way, because Michael Zurov says he doesn't want to be on the committee, it's not going to be a PhD thesis. Just kidding.
I have a kind of middle, I hope, a middle ground suggestion. It seems to me that the educational.
I'll call you in a little while, I'm on a conference call.
The, you're talking about two separate things, an educational forum for the public versus people coming in to educate us about what the department is doing.
Yes.
But so here's one suggestion for the first one, which I do think we have to have, certainly, you know, later than October, and I welcome the September date for the public forum. And that is that the educational component of that, rather than being a grab bag for the officials from the department to talk about whatever they want to talk about, or a specific checklist of things we want them to talk about, that they be available to answer questions from the public. If somebody brings up a question about the use of force policy, there's nobody that could answer that better than someone from the department.
Right.
In the manual, but the department officials could talk about how that works out in practice, or mental health calls, or motor vehicle stops. So they could respond to public questions if they're willing to do it. I hate to impose on them, but this is the world we're in now.
Yeah, we can do that. Let me just add, I did circulate the use of force policy to the committee, and I urge everyone to read that. And you have to read that if you're going to be on this committee. I see that Mel Kleckner has his hand up.
I was just going to say that the one thing that I would object to or caution against is having critiques or creating critiques of the police department at this early stage. On September 15th, you're talking about educating, and, you know, I think it's way premature to bring somebody to give their own opinion. And I think we're way too, way too early for that, myself.
Well, no, I was talking, I was thinking about that in a more general sense. For example, you know, if we talk about police going to domestic violence calls or mental health calls, you know, maybe someone should tell us why they think that that's not a good idea. Just so we get, you know, the other side and can make, you know, informed, you know, thinking about that. Ann Braga also has her hand up.
Thanks Bernard, I just.
And we've lost you.
Wanted to get back to.
And you're having.
Cutting in and out.
Broadband problems. Okay, let's let her figure it out, and Ron?
Okay, so we're talking about two different kinds of public outreach things.
Try this again.
Okay, let her go.
Okay.
Sorry, is this better?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, getting back to the educational components, you do have, you know, as resources for your committee, is some content experts that could, you know, you've got your committee members going to be detailed in various subcommittees. But your content experts, myself and various others, could put together, you know, a proposal for educational sessions, whether you call them vignettes or modules or whatever else, on topics, and get some direction on sort of the highest priority areas, so that there aren't 20 of them, but maybe the top five, to provide what's going on on use of force, on mental health or crisis intervention, those kind of things. So that there's, you know, a good understanding from someone who does the work in the department that can go out to the general public, in addition to the shorthand or shorter presentation to the committee itself, so that the information is out there to the public so that when they go to ask questions in the listening session or make their comment, there is at least an opportunity for members of the public to get some direct information on how, you know, Casey's group responds to community service events with an informed, you know, lens, should they choose to participate and watch an educational component.
Right.
So that's just a suggestion.
And are you saying that you could provide some of those topics, proposed topics?
Well, I think you've got a list of proposed topics, whether it's, you know, part of Marty's list or the list from the last meeting or whatever else. Obviously, it would be vetted through the committee. You know, we're here to support, not to take over the work of the committee, but to be able to say, okay, the content expert on X would be, you know, if it's complaint process, would be Paul Campbell to sort of walk us through what his complaint looks like, et cetera.
Okay, okay, let me go to Ron and then Elizabeth, but first, you know, unless, and then Jonathan. Unless someone objects, I think we're leading towards a, or heading towards a subcommittee to deal with educational programs. And anyone who else, other than Ron, who wants to work on that should think about volunteering. Okay, Ron?
Okay, so I just want to point out, I think we're talking about the two different, with two different kinds of meetings. One, I was thinking of the mid-September proposed thing as basically presentations, give information out. It is important to get public feedback about those things and be able to ask questions. But I thought that was the purpose of the September 30th meeting, which is the public hearing meeting. Do we not think of it that way? And if we don't think of it that way, I would be interested in an understanding, you know, you know, why, how other people are thinking about it.
Okay, my way of thinking, you know, people can state their own views, is that September 26th would be presentations, you know, whatever format. And then September 30th will be an opportunity for the public to chime in and give their views and et cetera, on anything, and they of course will. Elizabeth?
Thanks Bernard, I actually, I like the idea of both of these suggestions, and I think we're talking about two different functions. The one obviously is educating the public, and then giving them some information in what to react to when we have our listening session, so that they come more informed. And we're obviously all going to get something out of that also. But I think the idea of having these smaller vignettes at the beginning of each meeting, I know personally, my information and knowledge about the police department is uneven. There's certain areas that the police do that I'm very aware of, and I know what a great job they do, and I could tell you which officer to talk to, but there are other areas that I just have never really had to interact with. And I think the value of having these smaller events is, I think Paul's point about it comes to life, but it also will help us have a more, a more broad, consistent understanding of the police department, which I think is a context that is important as we start to hear from these subcommittees. I think without that context, it would be difficult to hear the information.
Okay, so I think there's, at least I think there's general agreement that those 15-minute pre-meeting, you know, someone called, I guess you called it vignettes, or whatever you want to call it, you know, will do. So, you know, people should think about how, you know, what type of structure is needed for that. But separate from the educational, whatever we're going to call it, Jonathan?
Yeah, it sounded to me like maybe Ron was saying that part of the educational piece is to create those, that like 10, 15-minute vignettes that would be put out to the public. You know, and I think we are in agreement that there should be two different kind of, you know, ways of, in which, you know, I'm kind of saying ditto, I agree. But yet at the same time, you know, maybe we can work with big to produce, you know, little clips of, you know, somebody talking. little clips of, you know, somebody talking about what the police do, and there's sort of a montage or something like that that can be out there, and but 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 that would be different than a town hall where people, the public, are coming in and asking questions um about, you know, and speaking their mind about, you know, their perception of the policing town.
Okay, so so this has evolved to something other than a town hall.
Um, I agree. It could be something completely different, right?
Yeah.
That we're adding something on top of, you know, in addition to the stuff that we were giving.
Yeah, so that that aspect of a town hall would be done on September thirtieth. So, you know, the the subcommittee that we're forming will come up with a better name than Town Hall. Okay, um, I don't see any other hands up. Janice, you look like you're about to put your hand up? No?
Yes, I was. So, um, one thing you may not know about me, people who know me, is that my master's is in community health education. And um that we are in a Twitter universe now. I think ten to fifteen minutes is too long for public consumption. And um I would recommend something that, you know, more like five to seven minutes. Um, if you really want to capture uh the attention of people, that's my sense of things.
Okay, and so what you're you're talking about in the educational thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you do the vignettes. I would make them shorter. I think this committee, but I also think they're useful beyond this committee, which I, which I think is what you were all getting at. But I would, I'd be concerned about people's attention span these days.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so would you like to be in the committee with Bernard and me?
I would be happy to.
Okay. Okay, um, any further discussion? We we've put that this educational programming thing into a subcommittee um so that we can talk about other things in this committee meeting. Anyone else interested in that, by the way? Uh, Kate, oh, June, okay. Um, and I guess, well, we will call upon Chief O'Leary for for just information. Um, you know, ideas and and just make sure you get our facts straight. Okay, uh, let's move on. Um, okay, next on the agenda is is discussion of of the proposed work plan. Um, and yeah, I I put together a bunch of topics. Um, I guess the question is, you know, what do we do with those topics? Is that uh is a sufficient list? Um, you know, there are other things, or other ways of of articulating the topics. What do people think about, you know, how we deal with this? And we could create another subcommittee. But uh, let's talk first.
Marty, you're muted.
I just want to do a quick time check.
Okay, what time is it? Five fifty-six. He said an hour and a half. Okay. Um, thank you.
Michael, did you have your hand up?
No, 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 I was saying you were muted, but maybe you were intended to.
Oh, yeah, I actually, for some reason, I had to reopen the Zoom. I don't know what I did, but um I I I don't think we ought to form a subcommittee for this. I think that I would request that Bernard, with the help of Mel and Chief O'Leary, try to take those items and break them into a manageable number of subcommittees. Some of those items on that list, I'm looking at it from last week, which most of you may not have handy. But there was one that was right around the middle called questioned police functions. They had about twenty separate issues in them. Now, I'm not, they they probably all need to be looked at, but the problem is until everything gets broken down into subcommittees, I I think we're totally in chaos here. Um, and I propose that that Bernard and our leadership, which I'll say includes Mel and Chief Chief O'Leary, try to break them down into a manageable group of, I think, four subcommittees. Uh, because there's only eleven of us, I believe, and uh I propose that the complaint committee be broadened to an accountability committee, so it could also include things like uh uh training and internal uh discipline and uh maybe the camera issue, which I'm hoping we'll get five minutes on tonight, body and dashboard cam. Anyway, the point is, I think somebody needs to present us with groupings, and we need to decide, A, if anything should be added, and then B, try to get some subcommittees working on these things.
Does anyone object to that? I mean, I guess that makes sense. Um, okay, that that means I have to do this work.
I'm willing to help if you want, but I I'm guessing you could do it more efficiently and just as well without me.
Yeah, or let's let's do it this way. Why don't everyone look at the list? You know, come up with their own ideas and send your suggestions to me. Uh, I won't respond, so it won't be a deliberation issue for meeting law purposes. But um, you know, just send me your suggestions and and we'll try to digest and and um you know, bring, regurgitate it out in a coherent um mix. Didn't want to take that metaphor too far. Okay, so, okay, so why don't we, why don't we deal with that that way?
Bernard?
Yes.
Bernard, would you just send out that list one more time, Devin?
Okay.
Just so we make sure we're looking at the same list.
Okay.
Okay.
I did just share all of that in the chat. Um, so folks can click on the link in the chat, and you'll have access to all the documentation. I've also created a shared OneDrive folder. Um, so this committee will have access to that and will be able to put resources in there. That's where all of the documents from your meetings will be stored. Um, and then in addition to putting whatever you folks want to put on um the main website um page that's dedicated to this committee. Um, but you will um see that when your agendas are posted online, all of the meeting materials that correspond with those items are linked, um but you'll also have sort of an internal shared space via OneDrive where you folks can upload um whatever resources you want to look at in advance of the meeting.
May I just add that that's available to the public as well, because
Thank you.
the Select Board.
Yes, it is.
Uh, puts up not just agendas, but also uh the documents that are being discussed at meetings. Uh, it's called the packet, and you could get those on the town website as well.
Right.
Yeah, so I created a packet for this group and the meeting, and that's the link that you see in the chat.
Okay, so um Devin, how, once we close out this meeting, we don't have access to that link. How do we?
If you, if you click it now, it's just going to bring a hyperlink, so then it'll already be in your browser.
But if you want to find it at a different time, you would go to the Boards and Commissions page.
Okay.
Would click on the Select Board Committee for policing reforms, and then on the left-hand side, there's a column that says agendas and packets.
No, I got that, Devin.
Well, that's just, you know, for everyone.
Yeah, that's helpful for all of us.
Yeah.
And may that link be put into our, in the minutes for this meeting, so we'll have it there as well?
Happily.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so um, so let's move on to the uh updates. Uh, start off with the complaint process. And I guess we've already answered one of my questions, and that is, are we setting up formal subcommittees? I guess we are. Um, sorry, Devin. Or the, do the subcommittees have their own or do their own minutes and 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 staff their own meetings? I guess that maybe that's how they should be looked at.
Yeah, I'm no expert, but that sounds right to me. We should just keep our own minutes. It's infeasible otherwise.
Um, yeah.
I have one other question in that regard, Bernard. The subcommittees are an extra headache for what's an otherwise good bylaw about posting open meeting uh notices electronically, because subcommittees across all town government have been one of the most difficult uh categories to do that. And so my question is uh, including the subcommittee, there were two going right now, is uh they need to be educated on how to do that. That's.
Okay.
Deal with that till later, but.
And what are we talking about posting?
Agendas and documents being discussed, the same same things we have for our full committee.
Okay, that means we have to have agendas, um, and then, of course, take minutes and 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 then, you know, all the documents we work with have to be posted. I mean, that 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 I'm, I guess I need some guidance as to what we really are required to do and and what we can do that that's actually doable. I mean, the reason why there's a problem with posting uh subcommittee minutes is because it's just not possible for subcommittees to do that for the most part. Uh, they don't have staff. Um, I mean, even committees have problems, but so I.
Leaving agendas are part of the open meeting law, not just our own bylaw, so I I'm not saying I love that, but.
Okay, I mean, so I guess I I should talk to town council, because, you know, to have, to make or to post uh forty-eight hours in advance, uh meetings of a subcommittee that's that's coming up with ideas to be discussed by the committee um means that we don't get work done. Um, so.
I I mean, I'll just add in that generally, subcommittees are subject to the open meeting laws, but that I, that that I can look into a little bit further with respect to this specific committee and subcommittees that will generate from it and get back to you, but generally, I will say that subcommittees are subject to the open meeting law.
Okay, and what makes?
Subcommittees of of public bodies are subject to open meeting.
So what makes them a subcommittee? I mean, for example, if I say, hey, uh, Ron, why don't we get on the phone afterwards and and talk about the educational program? I mean, is that, is that a subcommittee meeting that has to be posted and we have to take minutes for and?
No, I I don't think that would be in that specific, you know, situation. It's not a deliberation. Um, but but I would say, I guess, a formal uh creation of a subcommittee within the committee or under the umbrella of a committee, um, that would be a subcommittee, but I again, I can I will double-check that with respect to specifically this committee and see if there's any different application, but but again, generally, subcommittees are subject to open meeting law.
Yeah, Casey, I'll get to you in a second. Also, remember, we 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 asked uh Casey and a couple other people to come up with a survey. Um, you know, I mean, is that a subcommittee? Um, I don't think they took minutes, you know? So, okay, so get the, get the answer to those questions. Call call me on that, too.
Okay, I I will do that. Thank you.
I I guess maybe it's just semantics, but is it worth calling these working groups? Um, instead of subcommittees? Is there a distinction between the two?
Well, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't advise um changing the name just to circumvent open meeting law. I think, you know, we have to call them what they are. If if it is a subcommittee, then then it's a subcommittee, and we shouldn't change the name just so that we're not. I think that that would be a violation of the open meeting law if we were to do that.
I guess I just think we kind of self-named ourselves a subcommittee where we could have just as easily named, self-named ourselves a a working group. Just as we're starting out here, I I think, I I don't know that our specific charge was, the language was specific, it was one or the other, so I'm just asking if there's a reason why we're one over the other.
I think we should be careful there.
Yeah, I don't think we called you a subcommittee. I think it was just, you go off and come up with an idea.
Right.
So, you know, if if that's a subcommittee and, you know, we have to um you know, post agenda, post meeting minutes, um you know, we might as well just not, we we might as well meet as a committee as a whole and go through the impossible task of um, you know, working through the stuff, so.
No, and I get that, and that's why I'll I'll reach out to you, Bernard, and and after I do a little bit of um research on that issue.
Okay. Okay, um, complaint process, uh, let's talk about that. What what did you find out? What thoughts do you have?
I guess just a couple of updates. I sent some stuff quasi minutes, but maybe I shouldn't call them that just yet. Um, but two main, main things. One is that Raj reached out to Lieutenant Campbell and um asked if we could get information about folks who have, like, contact information about folks who have filed complaints uh through the police department process so that we can follow up with them. And that was also helpful for me, um, probably not for Marty, because he's been around the block for longer, but just knowing, like, the scope, uh, like, how many people file complaints per year. It seems to be, you know, around five to seven. Um, but anyway, so that's one thing. We're gonna, we're gonna talk to those people if they're willing and and hear what their experiences are. Um, and then, second, I think there's, we were having a lot of discussion about, and this is all very preliminary, but like, whether, you know, what potentially, what changes or what, how can we improve or ensure that the policies and procedures on paper are sort of lived out, especially the right to appeal, um, which it's mentioned briefly in the NABL report from twenty seventeen about civilian complaints that apparently sometimes the Select Board didn't hear appeals, but there's not a lot of detail, and Raj spoke a bit about his experiences, so. Um, but just generally about, you know, where to go forward, whether and how to think about improving the current process versus looking at what some other communities have done in terms of having a separate procedure outside of the police department um operated by civilians and whether or not that might be appropriate for recline. But we're very, very early on. It was just sort of chatting. Um, but the the big sort of evidentiary point, I guess, is that we, we're going to talk to people who have filed complaints and ask them what their experiences have been.
Okay, uh, Michael, give give them some guidance. Open meeting law guidance.
Oh, for the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I did keep minutes, so I have those, but yeah, if we're going to call them that, but um, yeah.
Okay, so I I guess the agenda issue is also something you have to remember.
If I ask, have those minutes been shared with the full committee yet? We did finalize.
Yeah, I sent them last night.
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone should be getting those.
Yeah.
Or should have gotten them already.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, do people have any comments? By the way, I appreciate the minutes. I mean, they they're very helpful.
Sure, yeah. I'll say, we were genuinely curious about this issue about different forms of complaint procedures, and we've a lot to learn about, so if there's, if people do have thoughts on that, I'd love to hear them.
I just want to ask, so the the minutes that you guys have sent out, even though if they sent it, even though you sent them to us individually, will they also go on the um on on the central page that Devon Williams has set up where we kind of keep all our documents?
Uh, yeah, they should, they should. So that means be careful what you write down. Okay, June?
Yeah.
Um, so I understand from reading these minutes, and and this was really helpful, Michael, and 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 Marty and Raj to get these last night. So I understand from this that basically it seems like the issue could be boiled down to staying the course as things are, or bringing in some civilian oversight into the police department, or developing some sort of a new civilian body through the Select Board or other. And I, what would be helpful, I think, to me, and again, it might be too preliminary, is is if somebody could do as one of our, you know, five minutes or whatever it's going to be at the beginning of um when we go through this a little more, talk about kind of what is the state of the art around the country, like, what do most places do, and because I I don't know anything about complaint processes, so that would just give me a little bit of context to see if we are like such outliers, or um, does this just need a little tweaking or nothing at all, given the numbers, so. Or a lot of tweaking.
So, Chief Larry?
I just had two questions to Michael, if I could. Um, one of them is, when you got the names, are you going to get the names of the complainants for three years? Are you, did you also ask for the investigative reports? Of course, they'll be redacted, but I mean, I think it'd be critical before you talk to the people that you understand the nature of the complaint and the findings of it, and that might help, you know, level the field, uh, kind of.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that, I think it's important, you're entitled to them, and I, and it'd be in a redacted form, but you'll see that the type of work that goes into these investigations.
Yeah, that would be really helpful. I'm not sure Raj is the person who 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 uh who reached out to Lieutenant Campbell. Raj, I think you're muted. Raj, you're muted.
We can't hear you, Raj. We can't hear you, Raj.
I'll in any case, I'll make sure that that we do. I think one thing that came up is just it would be nice if this some information to this effect was public, just like the number of complaints per year. The nature of the complaints, like, were they about rudeness or were they about, you know, improper use of force, like just general like general categories? And then what the findings were, were they sustained? Were they dismissed? Like, none of that is, as far as we can tell publicly, obtainable. And just knowing the scope, I think, would probably be helpful for people.
He's gonna answer that question.
It is publicly accessible on our website. We produce that in a report twice a year.
So where where is it? Because I looked, I mean, I looked in the end year end report and the word complaint never appears, so.
So that's the citizen complaint process, and if you go to the community, the police community interactions report, it starts with an introduction page or several from a letter from the the chief. Then it's followed by our updated crime report, and then following that in in the report is the citizen complaint process. It follows arrest, field interviews, moving violations, and citizen complaints, and it's a table that breaks down the race and gender of the complaint, the officer.
So can that go on the civilian complaints webpage? I mean, there is clearly, if you Google civilian complaints Brookline, there is a page that comes up. And there's nothing about the previous year's reports or anything like that. I actually.
I don't know who manages that page, but the police department page does have that. I can send you a link to that, Michael.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. The complaint page may be just out of date. You know, Devin and I will look at that. Marty?
Yeah, three comments, two as to what June said and one on the last one. On the last one. I mean, we're basically, we spent five minutes talking about the work of the sub, what the subcommittee needs to work on. And I'm not sure we need everybody yet to be. I think it's an important topic, but we need to work on it as a subcommittee. Getting back to what Jill said, she appeared to pose a dichotomy. Between an outside civilian review board and sticking with the current process. There's actually something that I consider. The main priority, which is in the middle, which is improving the current process. I do consider what we have a civilian review, but it's by the select board and it's in a de novo appeal. Not a first instance, and I know some people object to that, but anyway, there's something in the middle is what I'm saying. The other thing was. This gets back to what I was saying before about bringing in guests and experts. It seems to me that this committee, the subcommittee should talk to those kind of people and come up with some proposals. And then the full committee ought to have access to the same people to ask questions, but it kind of puts the car before the horse for the full committee to be hearing from those people. We've already talked in the subcommittee about some of the people that we can call upon. And their names that some of you will recognize, like Howard Friedman, Jack McDevitt. But I don't really think the full committee needs to do that yet.
Okay. Yeah, and by the way, there's also another alternative, and that is a civilian person. Within, you know, the select board office or someone else who who could provide maybe supplemental services or, you know, separate complaint review services.
Right.
Yeah.
And that those are just ideas, you know, for people to chew on.
If I could just think to Michael. To follow up on what Marty said about ten years ago, maybe a little bit longer. The town put together a study onto our internal affairs and and the complaint investigations, and they came up with this policy. So the results of the study were done in a report. I'll see if we can find that and get that.
I sent it to everybody, chief.
Oh, you did? Okay.
On the subcommittee.
Now, that was a nineteen eighty seven report, Marty.
No, 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 the subcommittee got the two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine report. This has been amply studied, it seems.
Well, continue studying.
And really, Michael, that's where the basic of that complaint policy that we've been working under for now since two thousand and nine came from that committee.
Great. Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, by the way, who's on this subcommittee?
It's Raj, Marty, and I.
And Michael. Okay. Let's let's move on. I think we we got that under control. Let's move on to the Brookline Housing Authority survey, which was circulated. I assume everyone received it. But that was a good survey. It'd be very useful. Question is, how do we get it out? I mean, I have a few comments in terms of, you know, nomenclature. You know. You know, the the top should be, the name of the committee should be correct, you know, Select Board Committee on Police policing Reform. And one other thing that I felt was missing, and that is. Ask how often have you spoken to walk and talk officers? Right, you know what I mean? I mean, that that that'd be an important piece of information.
Yeah, just personal experiences, definitely. Maybe you want to take this one or?
Sure. So it is still a work in progress, and we do welcome, if you want to email us individually or or make comments tonight, you know, adding questions and and. You know, kind of. Making sure that we have a good, we have a good survey product that we're putting out. I did speak with Brookline Housing Authority today at Barones. They will be assisting us in getting the survey to their residents. We discussed in our first meeting, we met twice this past week. You know, some of the issues around publishing that this survey electronically, that it makes it inaccessible to the H A residents that don't have access to computers or internet. Who may have, you know, challenges being able to access. The the survey and certainly the older population living in housing that's much less likely to to be using that. We also wanted to ensure that the survey is. Managed in a way that it goes only to those residents who do live in housing, so that we're truly getting responses from residents who are recipients of, you know, customers of this service. We, once we, you know, tweak our survey a bit more, Matt Veronis and some members of his staff, the housing managers and leadership. Will also look at the survey and, you know, it's important to find out if there are things that they want to know about the program since it is a joint program. And has been in place for decades between the BHA and and Brookline Police Department. It's not just a program we've, you know, installed officers into housing. It's a cooperative program. With them, and so they will review the survey and then will also present it to some BHA residents and get some feedback in terms of what we're asking. Are we asking the right questions? And and tweak the survey a bit more. I did speak with Matt Veronis today and got commitment from him on working with us to make sure that we can. Get this survey to the residents, and we talked to, you know, about some of the logistical issues around COVID and. Distribution and and some work that they've done with voter registration and and different mailings recently during during these COVID times to ensure that their residents are. Able to have access to the survey. And so I think we're, we've made a lot of progress in a week. We're really excited to have folks look at it and report back to us your thoughts. On on the survey and, you know, it is preliminarily in design. We really want to kind of narrow it down to a shorter version, and some of that is formatting that. Michael's been working on to try and maybe get to, you know. A page double sided or, you know, no more than maybe three pages, so it's not too much information. Too many questions going out and and, you know, will be tossed aside for that.
And in, oh, sorry, Casey.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, in addition to the survey, I have to apologize. I didn't get the interview questions out to you all in time, but in addition to the survey, there's also an interview component. Going around in in actually asking people questions with a recording device with their permission, of course. And and that would be then transcribed in in, you know, in published. Or put transcribed and put together, but in addition to the survey, there is there is an interview process.
Great, okay. So it looks like we're really teed up for having this subject as one of the topics of our meeting. And, you know. We we could structure it so that the fifteen minute or whatever period of time in the beginning of the meeting that we've talked about could be spent describing what this walk and talk program is, how it relates to the Brookline Housing Authority. Anything else? And then following that, you know, what were the results of the survey? You know, in terms of, you know, how it's viewed, you know, by by residents, et cetera. So think about when we want to do that. I mean, you know, is that something we should do, you know, early on in the process, like, you know, early in October or? Is more time needed? I don't think more time is needed, but.
I think we can get the survey instrument ready to go fairly soon. We did talk about this time of year with. Families, I think, are really inundated right now with all the mail and correspondence in the schools regarding, you know, the remote learning, and so I think probably the next couple of weeks is not the best time to to do that outreach, but. Once things settle down, I think it would be. You know, I think we can certainly have a finished product probably within two weeks and then work with housing to, you know, we can. Print it and work with housing to get it distributed. By the end of September, Michael, Jonathan, do you think so? Will we maybe the third week in September, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds great. I mean, I definitely want to talk with a lot of folks at BHA and including residents. And hopefully Jonathan, I know Jonathan's starting to do interviews, and so that'll help us figure out how, you know, what changes to make before it goes out, but I think, yeah, end of September is a reasonable, like ambitious but reasonable goal for distribution, I think.
Okay, and. When do we think we'd be able to get results? I mean, what what's the timeframe on that, like three weeks?
Well, I I mean, results, depending on the, you know, the number of responses in addition to the interview questions. You know, in analyzing and putting it all together, I I think it's going to take some time to to be able to get to a place where we have sort of a, you know. A conclusion of, you know, any kind of finding to to be able to put out there with confidence. That that's going to take a little while, I I believe. I I in terms of timeframe, I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, just physically reporting the responses is going to be complex because they're paper, so it's actually going to take somebody, probably us. But somebody a lot of time just transcribing them, which is kind of going to suck, but oh, well.
Plus, we did discuss translating the survey into several languages that are that are the primary languages, second language is spoken. Among the residents. There's about twenty five hundred residents in Brookline Housing, and that's across about nine hundred households. So I don't, you know, I don't, the return on on a survey like this is we're probably looking at no more than twenty percent return. So I don't think the numbers will be terribly overwhelming for us, maybe twenty five percent. I just know typically surveys are are low in response.
It depends on how much we're gonna, we'll have to figure out how to coordinate this with BHA, but one thing that I'm curious about, like, in terms of, are we gonna remind people and do follow ups and so on to increase response rate? But one thing that I think would be nice to talk to you, Bernard, or I'm not sure who about is, you know, when it comes to things like translating, my impression is that costs money. We're gonna have to pay somebody. And so is it the case that we have resources at our disposal through this committee? That we can use for something like translating the survey into Spanish or Mandarin or what have you?
Well, the select board and town meeting did set aside some money for the two committees. I mean. We haven't come up with a process for actually accessing that money, but, you know, we we can figure out a way of doing it. Lloyd Lloyd Jellino, who's on the phone, may also, you know, have some thoughts on on how to do that. So Lloyd. Okay.
I'll just say, we've translated a lot of material during COVID, working with the health department, and and mostly we've used the school. Contract contractor to do that, and they've been, you know, they have been reasonable that there is a cost associated.
Okay.
Casey, I'm sorry, I'm Lloyd. Casey, you also have a translation service that the police police department uses as well, right? Language line?
Yeah, but for a written document, most mostly what we've used is the the translation services that the school has on.
By the way, a question has been asked, I think by Janice, are the questions, are the surveys going to be anonymous?
Well, that's my question, Bernard. May I ask about that?
Well, if you have something to add to the question.
Well, I hope I do. I wouldn't be just saying yes. What I have to add is, first of all, I think if that's the case, it should say so, but I also think there should be an option to be not anonymous. Some people may appreciate being identified and being asked for the question, so I think it should be optional. I have one other comment on on the forum, if I could, while I have the floor.
Yep.
This might not be my last, it's certainly not my first stupid question of the day, but.
No questions are stupid on this committee.
Well, all right, well, I don't know. You'll be surprised by me at least. The the question is, is it politically correct to ask people to describe their race? Are you supposed to say ethnic background?
So Marty, so the interview portion of of this research, if you will. You know, people are going to state their name. I mean, you know, you know, there's there's a whole disclaimer, like, people know that. All the information they share is not are not against them, you know, and they're welcome to share their name and so on and their race if they feel comfortable. I actually spoke with somebody this morning who, you know, is a in a German descent person, you know, and. He shared his age and name and where he lives and so on, you know, and and so, so I think that's going to be the portion where, you know, people. There's not going to be much anonymity with with an interview, you know, but but I think when it comes to sort of the the survey, then. People can choose to share their personal information, who they are, their name, and if not, then that's okay. I think it should be okay.
I'm just asking about the terminology. Is it race or ethnic background as well?
Race is totally PC.
I think ethnic background can get more interesting. Find a grand information, for example, that, you know, you can say race is black, but it could be interesting whether someone is, you know, Afro-Brazilian, Afro-Caribbean. From from the African continent directly or African American. I think that those kinds of nuances, Cape Verdean, I think those nuances can be very interesting and valuable. So I would rather say ethnicity just to get more fine-grained information. That's my thought.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it falls into a point where there may not be large enough. Communities at a certain point. It also probably becomes identifiable. I mean, it's tricky. I agree, you know. But we can think about whether to add a a different question, gauging ethnicity as well.
You might need other as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And let me also add, I don't think we're dealing with. Going to be dealing with undocumented persons, but be sensitive to the fact that. People you're talking to may know or have relatives who are undocumented. You want to make sure that you don't do anything to compromise them.
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Next, chokehold. Now, I've been talking about that for the last few weeks or a couple of months on the select board. And I see it just as a question of putting together a proposed amendment to the use of force policy. And I was going to do that until this committee was set up, and I thought that, you know, that should be done through this committee. And what I'd like to suggest, I mean, anyone wants to talk, work with me on this is fine. I want a subcommittee, though, something that should be pretty straightforward. But what I wanted to do is to talk to Chief O'Leary and Michael Kevinney of the Police Union and just make sure I I get their their thoughts, their inputs. Among other things, make sure that, you know, we're talking about the right thing. I mean, chokeholds are one thing, but there are other ways of obstructing airway. And and doing other things to to do someone that should be covered or should be at least be understood. So, you know, my my suggestion on this is that, you know, I just have those conversations with those two and and other people. And come up with some language that I'll bring to. Not the next meeting, but a future meeting.
Well, I have a question. Why is that separate from the use of force discussion, which is broader than chokeholds? It seems to me it's part of that.
Yeah, it it could be, but, you know, chokehold is one of those, what we call low hanging fruit. We'd like to just deal with it because it's a, you know, hot issue. You know, in town and elsewhere. I mean, it's, we haven't had a problem, but, you know, everyone's talking about it, and it seems to me that a quick and easy. Addition to the use of force policy. I mean, the use of force policy. I mean, the use of force policy implicitly bans it, as well as the training the police go through. But I think people really want to see a more explicit ban, even if that has symbolic meaning. I mean, anyone have any objection to that? Michael, I'll talk, Michael Kevinney, I'll talk to you later, and you can tell me your objections, if you have any. But any other discussion on that? Okay, we're time check. Can I have a watch? It's 6:33, an hour and a half and three minutes. So I think we can wrap things up. We've accomplished a lot, in my opinion. I'd like to just tell people about the upcoming meeting of the Task Force on Reimagining Policing that select person, Raoul Fernandez, is chairing. They're going to have a meeting on Friday at 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And I know it's early. It's early for me. Pardon me? Yeah.
Said 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
No, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Did I say PM? I apologize. But anyway, I urge people to try to listen in on their discussion. It's probably the initial organizational meeting. But it's important that the two committees, you know, know what's going on on in the other, in the other committee's work. And, you know, think about what we're doing from the standpoint of, you know, what they may be discussing or learning. So that meeting, as I said, is Friday, two days from now, beginning at 8:00 AM until 10:00 AM. And Devin, could you tell people how they can get access to that Zoom meeting?
Yes. If you visit the town website, BrooklineMA.gov, on the front page, there is the town calendar where all meetings are posted. And you will see the hyperlinked Zoom link on the agenda. It's also listed in the location setting of the meeting. And then you'll be able to register for the meeting as an attendee and potentially be promoted to a panelist if you are going to weigh in, or if there are any collaborative meetings for this group in the future.
Yeah, I think unless we actually set it up as a collaborative meeting, we should really just be observers. I don't want to disrupt the work of that committee, you know, with more comments than they're going to get, and they can get a lot. But Devin, do you think it makes sense to send out the same email you send to the members of that committee to members and the non-voting members of this committee?
I can do that if you want me to.
I think it'd make it easier for people to get into the meeting. Is there a problem with that in any way?
No, no. I just, they'll have the password. So if I send it through the calendar invite, which is why I usually only do that for folks who are on the meeting itself. But I can send reminders, and I can send the link. But then folks will be responsible for registering themselves. And then that way they'll join as an attendee, and there won't be any confusion about who's a panelist and who's an attendee.
Right. Okay. So if people can wake up that early in the morning, I will too. I urge you to listen in on this meeting, on that meeting, too. Okay. Finally, at the suggestion of Marty, and it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to just give an opportunity for people to bring up any announcements or new business. Marty, what do you want to announce?
Coincidence, I have, I guess it's new business. And because of the agenda, we can't do it tonight. But I would really appreciate at our next meeting that we hear whatever can be said publicly about the issue of dashboard and body cameras. This has been lingering since Chief O'Leary was chief, and he was supportive, and Chief Lipson was supportive, and there's now collective bargaining going on. And at a minimum, it seems to me the public is entitled to know who's interested in this. And I realize that the union is in a, in the middle of the bargaining. But I don't think it's unreasonable. And I yield to nobody in the faith in our police union in Brookline. They have nothing like a bad reputation of what's going on elsewhere. They've never been anything but cooperative with reform efforts. But I'd like to know what they feel about this, to be honest. It seems to me, this has been going on now for four years. We've been talking about it. And it's, it's an idea whose time came five years ago, six years ago. So anyway, I'm hoping that'll be on our next agenda.
Okay. Let me say in response to that, that the select board is in active contract negotiations with the Brookline Police Union, and body cameras and related equipment are among the issues we're negotiating, which is required by the collective bargaining statute here in the state, as I'm sure Marty knows, it's Chapter 150E. But beyond that, at this point, I don't think that I can say anything else that's appropriate. Of course, Michael Kevinney can, you know, speak for the union if he'd like to. But, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I hope that we'll have, you know, more concrete information regarding this. Let me also add to your comments about the Brookline Police Union. I think, you know, we have a police union that's way different from some of the ones you read about in the newspapers across the country. And just as an example, you should read their contract. I mean, it's a complicated document, and how it's organized is confusing to me. But, you know, you'll see that the issues that people are talking about across the country are not issues before that we have to struggle with here in Brookline. And that's just one example of, you know, what Marty's talking about. So. But anyway, anyone else want to say anything? Michael, you don't have to. So, I think, you know.
I think all I'm going to say about that is that under the ground rules that were presented, we're not able to speak on this. The purpose is that they want to keep it confidential at this moment. I will say that we're open to anything. We're waiting, we're willing and able. And at any point in time, if the town wants to present, we're willing to take a look at anything. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. More coming in the future. Okay. So I mean, this is a hot issue, and, you know, it's going to hit this committee at some point. So, you know, when we're in a position to actually talk about it, you know, we can do that. So, anything else on the, for the agenda? Anything else to, I'm sorry, any other announcements or new business that people want to bring up? Seeing, Mel, I see you have your hand raised. Sorry, missed you. Mel?
Yes. No, I was just going to comment on the collective bargaining. And I certainly would not recommend that there be any public discussion of ongoing negotiations. But as Bernard indicated, you know, I think there's active negotiations, and hopefully within a few weeks, we might be able to report on something, but not right now.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Elizabeth Child, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Bernard.
You didn't, it sounds like.
Am I now unmuted? Okay.
You're now unmuted.
I just wondered if we were going to have a 15-minute educational thing next time, maybe, and if what that topic might be, it was really more of a question for the future agenda.
Okay. Okay. Any thoughts by members of the committee? You know, what is our, the original idea was to use the next meeting to sort of finalize plans for the educational forum and, you know, develop the topics for the committee's, you know, work.
We have a subcommittee for that now, don't we?
Yeah, we have a subcommittee for that now. But, you know, do we want to set up some type of educational program for next meeting? Is that, Casey, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I would be happy to look at either of the two group, working groups, subcommittees that are doing work right now. We could have either myself or members of our walk and talk unit come and give a brief overview, as we're looking at the survey and how we're going to be distributing that and working with housing to do that, go through that process. Or we could ask Lieutenant Campbell to come and give an overview of the citizen complaint review process and the work that he does in his office in conjunction with the select board. So I'm open to suggestions of other topics, but I just throw those two out as, you know, two of the early topics that we're already kind of digging in on.
Yeah. Let me throw out one, one idea. You know, we had another police shooting the other day that's pretty egregious. And it seems to me, I mean, I haven't studied the situation very carefully, but it seems to me that there is a breakdown in discipline as well as bad training or just bad implementation or training. You know, so, you know, maybe helpful to, at some point, and maybe next week's a good time, to have someone talk about the use of force policy. I think people absolutely need to read that. It's, you know, not terribly long, but it is not a short document, and it has a lot of information. So I just throw that out. What do people think? What do you want to learn about tomorrow?
I really think the use of force policy would be a good one to start with, actually, because it's so central to so many conversations that are happening currently in the community. And I like that idea, actually.
I'll also just add that Devin put into the link, into the chat, a link to our mid-year and annual report. And as part of that report, there's also an overview of the use of force used for the previous six-month period, and then the year-end report for the prior year. And that breaks down the type of force that is used and the type of situation in which, you know, whether it was, you know, in the process of putting someone under arrest, or, and, you know, use was applied, and trying to subdue a, you know, a mental health resident, resident mental distress that was hurting themselves or whatnot. And so that might be interesting to look at before, you know, before we have our presentation as well. It's a very short, brief in each of those reports.
Okay. What do other people think?
So are we talking about our, or reading the use of force policy, and then there also being a presentation on use of force in the first 15 minutes of our next meeting? Is that, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think people really should read that policy. And the next meeting, you know, would probably also serve as an opportunity to, you know, have, have a discussion of what, you know, how is that actually implemented, you know, what its role is, and, you know, making sure the police don't, you know, go out of line in terms of, you know, use of force and other issues. Marty, yeah?
Yeah. I'm not going to repeat my sentiment that I think those presentations should be first to the subcommittees working on those things. But what I do want to add to that is that, and I'm the worst offender on this, but to the extent it's possible to send out the proposed subcommittee groupings more than a day or two before the meeting, I at least would like to study them a little and think about them. I'm the worst offender on that. And I sent stuff to the subcommittee that I'm on no more than 12 hours in advance. So anyway, to the extent that's possible.
You mean the work of the subcommittee?
I'm talking about the, the proposed subcommittee groupings that I think we decided we're going to do for the, to discuss at the next meeting, hoping we can get that a few days in advance.
Okay, so just the membership of the subcommittees?
Well, I think the membership is going to have to be decided at a meeting to get people to volunteer for what they're interested in. But I'm talking about the groupings of the many topics in the initial work plan into subcommittees. I thought that we agreed we're going to have proposed groupings for subcommittees.
Right. But that, I think that's down the road. And we're not, and we don't have that yet, so.
No, I know.
Bernard, if I may, if you want that use of force, we can make that happen. We could bring somebody, have somebody on the Zoom next week.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, that's, I'm fine with me.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Chief O'Leary said next week. I thought the calendar skipped next week.
Yeah, I thought it was the ninth, too.
I was not aware of that. That's probably my mistake.
No, actually, Devin, you mentioned something about the second.
I could have been, I thought that, I may have been confused. Raoul's committee is meeting every week, so I just, I thought this committee was meeting every week as well.
No, we're not that masochistic. Yet. Okay, so the next meeting is September 9. And so we'll have this, you know, initial presentation on use of force. And again, I urge people to read that. And, yeah, if you see some problems with it, you know, let us know. I think it's an excellent document, since I helped draft some of it. But, you know, there may be some, some things missing. You know, chokehold is one thing, of course, but there may be other things. And also come with questions you have about how it is implemented, meaning, you know, issues of supervision, a follow-up, a follow-up training. And of course, this sort of blends into or bleeds into the issue of, of discipline in the complaint process, the whole thing. So, but anyway.
I do have a logistics question. As I mentioned, we are recording these meetings now. And, you know, Jonathan Mandy, a couple of times, has asked that we're, you know, publicizing these and making sure folks in the public are aware of the work. Does anyone have an objection to me sending these recordings to BIG so that they can play them at a later time? Folks can watch them on TV, or, and it's on their YouTube channel?
As opposed to just having the recordings in our, on our website?
Right. That would be in addition to.
Yeah. I don't know what other people think, but, you know, I'm a little hesitant to put it out for all the world to see at this point.
I actually don't mind that. I like the idea of it going out to all the world.
Okay, you'll, you'll hear from all the world.
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe I don't know what I'm getting into, but it's okay with me right now.
I think that's part of the discourse. I mean, that's, you know, you know, people do need to know what's happening and what we're talking about. And, you know, it might, it might even, I mean, it might be a good idea to reach out to someone from the patch, or Harvey Bradman, or somebody to, you know, write about what we're working on on both committees, you know. I think it's important to put it out there.
And these, these meetings are publicly posted. They're noticed. Like I mentioned, anyone who signs up will get a notification. We post them on the town's social media pages when the meetings are happening. But to Marty's earlier point, in order to post in a timely way and be in compliance with the posting regulations, if you folks do want anything included in the public packet that could be reviewed in advance, just don't forget to send it to me. I'll need all of that, you know, by the Friday prior to your meeting.
Okay. And let me just add that, since we're distributing the recordings of this committee broadly, people should just be conscious of what they say during the meeting. I don't want someone in Oshkosh to, you know, start talking about, you know, what Brookline is doing and, you know, misrepresenting, you know, some of our deliberative processes. So just, just be aware that, you know, the world is listening, as we always should. Okay, September 9, at 5:00 PM or 9:30 AM, or 9:00 AM, I thought it was the time. What do people think? Want to do it again at 5:00, or do you want to do it in the morning?
We got a show of hands, maybe?
Okay.
I thought we were going to alternate, so we should do 9:00 AM next time.
Well, you know, we can, we can alternate, or we can just, you know, decide, decide based on what people's schedules are. I mean, do people have problems with 5:00 AM or 5:00 PM? Or is there some other reason to have it at 9:00?
I know I'm not a voting member, but I do have a hearing at 2:00 PM. I don't think it would conflict, but I just thought I'd throw it out there that it's possible.
Okay. Jonathan, do you have a problem with 5:00 again?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to double check the patient gateway. I am pretty sure there's a couple of, I some of you know that I'm a caretaker for my father who had COVID-19. And and I know that I have another meeting. I'm working on applications for grad school on that day as well. So I'm going to have to double check, but I do think it's not on this calendar, but it's on my other calendar, but I may have some conflicts that time. So it's just not in front of me on the calendar that I'm looking at right now.
I could make 5:00, but I cannot make 9:00 AM that day, just.
Okay. One, one strike against both times. What do other people think?
I'm not sure Jonathan wasn't sure about either, was he?
Yeah, and, you know, no, I thought it was just 5:00 that you're concerned about, Jonathan.
It's fine. I I will, I'm concerned that 5:00 PM will not work for me because there will be a conflict with, hold on. You, I don't want to take up people's time right now to go in a patient gateway for but, but I do know that I have an appointment at 4:30 that day.
Can we go to 6:00? Would that work for you?
But yeah, I mean, 5:00 or, or, you know what, let's, let's go ahead and do 5:00 PM. I don't want to be the person holding people up. It's going to 5:00 PM. If anything, I might be a couple of minutes late, but let's go ahead and do 5:00 PM on the night.
Okay. Any other problems that people have? Okay, so let's make it 9, September 9, 5:00 PM. Any other business to discuss? How, how far over 6:30 have we gone? 6:55, let's get off. Let's see, Devin says. Okay, thank you, everyone. Bye now.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye. Yeah. Let me get off.